John, do you, we can start. I can say that because there's two John.
We've got a couple of Johns in America.
Or town good.
So well.
Okay, we'll start, item number one, squaring in of new council members.
Yes. I will give you both your forms.
Form out.
Yes, if you will, raise your right hand, John, we'll start with you, and if you can read the oath.
I, Jonathan Blotter, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Okay, if you would sign your document, Eric Bunker.
Hi, Eric Bunker, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I'm signing under protocol. Okay, you wanted to have us? Any conflicts of interest?
If you would like to say any.
You got any, John?
I don't think so.
Mine are on record with the town.
If I had any, I didn't, mine are too.
Okay. We have item number three, business license application, we have no renewals this month.
Just get number two.
Oh, public comment. We should have done that before squaring in the new town council. Anybody here to complain, there's a job hold. He just filled it. So any public comment for anything that's not on the agenda that the council needs to be aware of? No concerns, everybody's happy? Okay. If you think you want to speak up.
Yeah, I have one, I don't see that's on, well, maybe that's in number six, I think it's in number six.
Okay. That takes us to item number four, adoption of a resolution concerning eight thirty-two Daniel Code. This is the new road standard that we looked at. Has everybody had a chance to look at that, is there any concerns or changes with that, did anybody?
Eric, there's one before that.
Twenty-one.
D R twenty sixteen zero one zero four A has to do with the planning commission.
Want to do that one first?
Please.
Okay. We have a resolution, D R two thousand sixteen dash one dash oh four A. Resolution, reappointing Daniel Town Planning Commission members for a four-year term to run from January two thousand sixteen to two thousand and twenty. The purpose of this resolution is to reappoint Daniel Town Planning Commission members who have agreed to continue to serve on the commission and who agree to abide by the ordinance established by the town of Daniel Council and by the bylaws established by the Town Planning Commission. Be it resolved and approved of the Town, that the Daniel Town Council, that the following persons, seat one, Gary Wade, seat two, Jay Winker, seat three, Pam Skinner, should continue to serve on the planning commission for another four-year term, which shall run from January two thousand sixteen to January two thousand and twenty.
Motion to approve that or accept that?
Yep, any motion?
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
All second now.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
That's great.
Sure, thank you.
Thanks.
Any to sign as the acting mayor, do you? They do an awesome job, the planning commission, they get, we get in some pretty hefty discussions.
Yep, they do.
Lots of things come up. Okay, so now you want to do the engineering department?
Yes, and that was my call, I, Mr. member goes A and B backwards.
It'll reflect good on the minutes now.
Will.
In line. Okay, did even, did everybody had a chance to review that? Did anybody see anything that was?
So this one is just, essentially to let us have a gravel, gravel road, and it's not really gravel, but it's a
It's a
Re-ground asphalt.
Yes.
And this has nothing to do with flag lots?
It does not. Yeah, this one was the road one we was talking about.
Now, if we approve this, are we on, wasn't this somehow a private road that we won't have to plow?
It will, it will depend on the road itself. The road itself, if the town has interest in keeping that road, having it moved into the town for some future connection road, would, that would be an option of having that road to the town, dedicated to the town.
Then we might like to pave it, right?
Yes, sometime in future we would, if it was a connector road.
Can you plan, can you plow those asphalt roads?
Lane has one, and that's what he plows with, until he was saying he plows that with his truck. They stay pretty, pretty hard.
He said the first year, a couple of rocks come up a little bit, but after that, the last few years, he says it's been just like asphalt.
Yeah, but have you seen how he plows?
That's true. He leaves an inch or two of snow. I wouldn't doubt it.
Which is, which is probably fine, but he, he leaves an inch or two of snow, it's not like an asphalt road at all.
I've heard the same thing that he said from other people also, have the same review. Yes, sir, absolutely, that was kind of what led us through that material, because of the fact you could plow it. When you go out there right now, there's a foot, half foot, a foot of snow.
Yeah, big stone.
You even need to be plowing, so it's definitely capable of taking it.
Now, what was that, what's the road up there, five hundred east? The county just plowed that one right down with the rental trucks.
Six hundred.
Six hundred?
Yeah.
They just plowed out, and that was all. Recycled, yeah.
I think once the water gets, gets in it, it'll probably freeze it.
It's a shit hard ride, that's what the lane, that's what the lane knows that is after the water's been on, he has to sprinkle this to try and
Oh, I see.
Sprinkle it, it'd freeze it, huh?
That steamroller down there.
Yep, I think we needed this, so what do we do?
I'll just read the resolution, you don't want me to read that whole thing?
No. Did you, are you good with it, Eric?
I just had a couple of questions on, there was just some typographical things. I was noticing, Ryan, the notice, it says November first, I thought we should be in line with the state on the commencement of the winter season, October fifteenth.
Okay. Where, where you at?
I'm on page three. At the, at the top, first paragraph.
Okay.
The winter season shall commence on November first, and end on April first, it can, I mean, we can change that, but I'd sure hate to have somebody coming in here on October twenty, twenty, I feel it's over the head with something when it's too cold.
Yeah, I can't, I think that was in there, wasn't it, or did we change that? I'm sorry, I've got enough revisions, I can't remember which was which.
I have the draft printed, one, three of sixteen, so this is the latest ingredients.
Okay, I was trying to remember if that was in there from before, or, I support the change.
October fifteenth, so what I just
Wait, I have one, four of sixteen.
One, four, he's talking on page three of the
The date there at the top, November first.
The winter season shall commence
Yeah, November first.
And that will be October fifteenth.
Yeah, so what version of this document are you reading?
Oh, this is the one I just printed, this is the latest one, I just printed that off. So this is the one that we were passing.
I looked at the resolution, not the
Chapter eight thirty-two, yeah, this is one I And then I just, the only thing else that I really saw in there, Ryan, was, what is the planner's role in this? We seem to sidestep by creating the engineering department, the coordinator, what is the planner's role in this?
Same as it was before, but that's a good question.
Because it really doesn't, I mean, we talk about the coordinator and his responsibilities.
Yeah, it really doesn't speak to the planner and the engineering division, or that engineering section. But, I mean, clearly where roads go and whether they're interconnected is clearly a planning issue that's spoken to in other sections of the code.
Okay.
But that's a good question.
So I submit that on eight thirty-two oh one, creation of the department, that there is hereby created a department of engineering, the department shall consist of one engineering coordinator and planner and other such employees as may be necessary to fulfill. Does that sound good, Ryan?
What page, Eric?
First page, first paragraph, eight thirty-two oh one.
Yeah, oh one, okay.
I'm just adding planner in there, so that's spelled out. And then, are you going to make those changes then?
Yes, I will make the changes in the document and substitute this section in the pro.
Or this one?
Yes.
Okay.
So will this, this code be?
This will be our new code. Eight thirty-two will take over the eight thirty-two.
Right. But this will be inspected by engineering, the new roads?
Yes. Yeah, all the engineering will be up for, as it speaks about in here, for inspection and And just as I read that, I was thinking, have we sidestepped, that's why I want to add back in the planner, because I think the town will have to say
Yeah, I agree.
As that rolls through. So the other, the other things that I found as I went through the document is just spelling errors, the town is, it was multi. And I'm just going to give this to you, so I just, I lighted word of the
Okay.
If that helps. Okay, is there any other, did you guys see anything, like, did you have a chance, Ryan, to? And there are some copies of the draft document over there on the table, if anybody wanted that from the public. That is a draft, we did do changes on the last meeting, and so it's not exactly what we're passing tonight, but it was the changes that we indicated in our last meeting. And so you'll see that it's changed to the four-foot sidewalk, that we had, Ryan, changed the sidewalk to four feet. That, that shows up in that document, and I believe that was the only major change, other than changing the non-roads, the non-paved standards to carry throughout.
Right.
Which has been changed in that document. So you ready for me to read this? Okay, all right. This is a resolution, D R two thousand sixteen dash oh one dash oh four B. Resolution to adopt a revised section of eight thirty-two, Engineering Department of the Daniel Municipal Code, with changes in verbiage addition of a new road standard located at section eight thirty-two oh seven, parentheses three, and new figures, one through eleven included. The purpose of this resolution is to add a new road standard and clarify language found in section eight thirty-two of the Daniel Municipal Code. Whereas the legislative body of the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, has held a public hearing for public comment regarding a change to section of the Daniel Code prior to its adoption, the public hearing was properly noticed and public comment solicited and considered. Be it resolved, accepted, approved, and ordained by the governing legislative body of the town of Daniel, that the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, hereby adopts this municipal code change, a copy of the changed section of code is attached hereto. And I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yep.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, it's been amazing.
We got there.
On the dot, right?
Just about, isn't it?
No, thank you guys.
Happy New Year.
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Have a great New Year, thank you all very much.
Okay, that takes us to item number five, planning department report. Hey, this is where you have question, right, John? Um, eighty-six. Oh, yeah, hundred, will we jump over that? No. Okay. Do you know, there, there shows up.
There it is.
There it is. All right, any further to draw?
And on the training, I will tell you that Skinner and Jay Winker have registered for the training, and if either, any of you three would like to do so, you may.
So this is for newly elected, they're not following now, they're following elected officials, training, this is the one down in Provo. And it goes from eight till noon, is that correct?
Yes.
So if anybody wants to attend that, there is a cost associated with that, and it's indicated.
Forty dollars.
Forty dollars.
Just let me know soon if you decide you'd like to. It's the same thing that we attended to.
That is on that, where they give you your book, duties and
And I think for the planning commission, actually, it's good because they do go over some of the news issues.
Yeah, as well, and that book is really invaluable, it's quite a shortcut through a lot of state law. So it is a good book.
If you do want some more comments, I will see if they can do a couple additional.
Yeah, the new one should be out now, right? Because I know some of the planning commissioners asked for one a little much, I thought, it's almost the end of the year.
I'll see if they can be in a half a dozen or something.
That'd be a good, good book.
I think that's the main cost, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, lunches included in that. After they ruin your day with, can't stomach it, they give you lunch.
Sometimes give those books away down at Royal Order, too.
Do they?
If we miss this, or can't promise, but sometimes you can pick them up there. You just have to go by the booth and pick up one at a time.
When will you, when will you be sending in our registration?
I have registered them already.
Oh, have you?
But it doesn't seem to be any deadline.
Okay.
So it's, it's on Saturday, so just let me know soon.
Okay. That is the wrong paper. In the middle of printing this, it decided to give an extra paper. You can't make heads and tussles, eh? Come on, John. Welcome to my world. Does that help?
That's
English, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, for some reason, between the printer and the computer, well, they're married, so sometimes they don't talk. So do you have any questions on that report?
Oh, yeah, now I see why, yeah, I do.
Okay.
That's why, yeah. The complaint.
Okay.
Is Mary Lynn the neighbor to Simpson fence?
Uh, she has her address here. So I'll give you a copy of that complaint. Yes, it does back up to the Simpson property.
Oh, backs up, so it's not the
She's on Big Hollow, is that right?
Yes. So that's a copy of her complaint. I can tell you I've been out, I see nothing on that, on that property that would indicate us to take action. Unless the council sees another reason for me to do that, and then I will.
So you inspected the property, and there's nothing there?
There's, there's two old cars out there, 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 there's none of his construction for his fence, I don't see anything out there.
Well, there's a mini backhoe sitting on the front lawn.
There is, and he's redoing his sewer, and I have mine right there, too.
Okay, so that, he's working on something there.
Yeah, he's working, and, you know, that water system that he has, he's not on the town water system, but he had gone put in a cistern out back, so the well fills the cistern, and then it works out of there because the well would go dry in the summer, and I think he's repelling all that because he doesn't like it.
Sure.
But yeah, he had, his whole backyard was dug up.
Is his trailer going to be parked on his front lawn, too?
That I don't know, I was looking out by this property, I didn't really pay attention up around the house, because, I mean, he got his work truck there, his had Simpson in the back, it just picked up all that Simpson fans, but
Did you see piles of debris and stuff?
I see, I see piles of dirt out there that he drove around, out in the far end, it looks like he's hauled his extra curb out there, up into the field, like we do with all of our ops. I'm not seeing anything that would indicate that a town would be taking action, unless you guys have seen something that I haven't seen.
So piles of garbage is not an accurate statement, that's how you say it?
There's actually a dumpster back there, so I, I, I don't know if that's what they're talking about, with, with the dumpsters there. And he's doing, like I said, he's redoing part of the basement there where that water comes in, I'm assuming that's what that's for, as he works on that, I'm not I mean, there's nothing to prohibit anybody from bringing a dumpster into their yard when they're doing something.
But there is, if it stays there for
Oh, I don't know.
A year, or is there?
I don't think there is.
There's not. You can bring a dumpster in?
Yeah. Matter of fact, I think we'd rather have it in the dumpster than going around the neighborhood. So is there something there, you live up in that neck of the woods?
It's, it's right along the, the issue that a lot of people, not just this person, but several have complained to me that three thousand South is becoming an industrial park and not a, not a residential area.
Yeah, and I talked to the mayor about that, and is it, is it time that the town does not allow residential businesses in the town, we can certainly do that. If that's becoming the issue.
Yeah, that, that might be something that needs to be addressed, because it, it is very industrial, and people don't like it, I'm, I'm, it doesn't really bother me, but I've been contacted by several of my neighbors, because I'm kind of right in that area, they don't like it, yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of chalked this one up to that first line in the letter. I relocated from Park City to Daniel. So
And why did you mention Park City?
Well
Do we address this?
I, I will address that, I, I mean, if that's what you instruct me to do, I was instructed to go look and see what I saw.
Okay.
So I've done that, there's nothing, I would go out, and I would send her a letter and say we've looked into it, and at this point, there's nothing in the town ordinance that's been violated, so unless you have seen something that I haven't seen.
But it's
I mean, it's a change of use, see how we have a new neighbor, neighbors do different things with their property, so Wayne, their right to enjoy their property versus your right to, you know, it's, that's always where we're at, and so we will never get away from that. I mean, it's probably been a vacant field out there until now, is that a part of what you're dealing with? So it's a change of use, for sure.
Can you store whatever you want on that property within reason, could he, could he put fifteen semis in the back of that?
Well, it depends on if, what he's doing there, if it becomes a health hazard, or environmental hazard, or like we talked about, the dust, noise, and smoke ordinance.
That's it, right?
And those things, then, then that's something that comes into play, that we, we will act on.
Is, is there a, is there a visual type ordinance that, you know, hey, that just looks ugly?
No. Because that's, that's what the Bill of Rights is all about.
Okay, so it's got to be noise, it's got to be
Well, the Bill of Rights
Smell.
Yeah, it's things that offend with, with the, the government says, yes, this offends, this is affecting your health, your safety. Not even property values can be considered in that. Property, if you say that makes my property less important, you can't consider that.
Well, we do have a height thing, right?
We do have a height.
Height feet, or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, well, different zones have different heights, so RA five is, I believe, twenty-three?
I think it's thirty-five.
Building?
Yeah. Might be thirty-five. I haven't brushed up against
Anyway, that's there.
Yeah.
But other than that, we don't really have anything that, if someone wants to come in and park their semis and have them there, there's nothing we can do about it.
Unless it's, unless it's causing a nuisance.
A safety, and a smell, or
Anything that's defined as a nuisance. Me looking at it. You can hang a piece of art out there, and some, some may sure be offended.
Sure, yeah, I understand that.
Yet to you, it's, it's, you know, something you value, so
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think you guys are doing an awesome job, but I also hope you guys remember why we became a town, so we could get away from the county rules and the city rules. We came, became a town because we didn't want all their regulations on the people. And so if you guys are going to start putting them on the people, then maybe we should have stayed the county or the town, instead of, because, I mean, I agree that, you know, I guess, I, I'm raising boys, I'm raising a family. And, and if I have something in my yard that, as long as I'm, my neighbors are, you know, they know what we're doing, I don't complain about what they have in theirs, that's their business, it's their problem. I, I went around, and I did a whole thing around the whole town, I took a thing of the, a map, and I went around the whole town and put a mark on everyone that has more vehicles, or trailers, or backhoes and things, and over half of the people in town have this. So watch where you're going, because when you start saying, oh, I don't like what you have, we're getting into people, neighbors nitpicking, they're not getting along with the other neighbors, so they complain. And instead, so you guys sometimes are falling into their bickering and their problems, let them deal with it. I mean, as, as a neighbor, why do they have to bring it to the town and say, you need to have him arrested because I don't like him bringing his back, his thing home, because I did it, I ended up in there. Well, we're not the county anymore, and we're not Heber City. We became a town to protect our rights and to be able to live the way we want to live. And if I want to live in chaos at my house, okay, it's okay, I pay for my house, I pay for my taxes, and as long as I don't have that smoke odor, and I'm not environmentally having a problem, I don't think it's anybody's right to come and tell me I can't have what I have there, because I, and if I have a business there, as long as I don't have smoke, whatever, a lot of people are running their businesses out of their homes, because where else are they going to do them? You either have to go find a place, and where are they, where are you going to find a place that you can park your truck? And semis are a big thing here, there's a lot of drivers in our town, I don't have a problem with it, there's a lot of people that don't, but maybe some of the neighbors do. I don't know, because, but if they was in my neck, if I got an asphalt plant, then I can't say nothing about it, I got a dump, can't say nothing about that either. So I'm just saying, just, I'm thankful that you guys have stuck with where, as long as you have, of keeping the town the way it is, and letting the people have what they have, instead of putting, if we wanted all those, what are they, C C N Rs, or covenants, we would have built it, went and moved into a subdivision that had them. We, I don't think the town people want all these C C N Rs stuck on them, because they can't get along with their neighbors, they need to learn to get along with their neighbor, or go deal with their neighbor with it. But I don't know why they have to come vowing to the mayor or to you guys, it's, you know, kind of childish, so How's that? Sorry. Now I won't be, I will not be invited to meeting again.
If they do have a concern, I, I agree that the town needs to look at that, we are, that's what we're here for, government is here for, for the protection of its residents. And if there's an issue, then we do need to step in, that's why we're here. But to, there's a fine line between enjoyment of their property and what you're, what you try and have them do on their property, and I can tell you there are many court cases.
Yeah, but it, it is zone residential agricultural, that is not industrial.
It is not.
And there is a big difference between someone having, I, I, I'm not saying anybody's violating this or anything else, but I do understand the complaints that have been given to me, that we are looking like an industrial zone, and we need to be careful with that. It's zone residential agricultural, not industrial. And if someone's running a trucking company and has fifteen trucks out of there, that's the wrong use of that property.
And so that brings me back to what I said earlier, is it time to eliminate the businesses in the RA five zone?
Yeah, and I, I'm not pushing that at all, but I, I think we have got to be careful with some of the things that are going on, or we're gonna end up with lots of issues going on. So sometimes no control, I mean, we've passed things before where the idea is to at least give it some control, so that you can go back to something. And it's really good, you went and walked around this property, said, hey, you're not doing anything wrong, that's great. We can go tell the people back now.
Yeah, I mean, but, but it's wrong in her eyes, she thinks it is wrong.
But if we tell her now, that's okay.
And then, and that's why it's so, that's why it's important they call me instead of Sheldon. So I could go and explain that. That we've got, we have a concerned neighbor, and so there's some concerns you need to be aware of. You haven't violated an ordinance yet, but you need to be aware of it, so that, so that the edge is taken off. We don't want to start wars, I mean, I don't, I can't tell you how many times I go out, and it's because they hate their dog barking at night. That's nothing to do with the issue, it's because they don't like that dog.
Yeah.
And, and so if anything comes up, you know, when it's bad, it's bad all over.
That's right, and I agree with that, we don't want to have that use.
You get to wide mat, it really don't matter what you do. It's still mad. So I, we do have to handle a lot of kickbluz, and we have to be supportive of the residents, they pay taxes, they have rights. I agree with that, I just don't think that this one has elevated to the point where we need to take action. We can take action, we can go to court, if you want to go to court.
I don't know what we'd take action on, there's not, like you said, there's, there's nothing there that we can say, hey, Ryan, you need to fix this.
The sheriff will issue them a ticket if we ask them to come out and issue a ticket, and that will go to court, and
But we don't have anything to issue a ticket on.
Not in my opinion, but that's just my opinion.
You know the code, you know what's written.
Yeah.
So
I think it would be thrown out of court, but that's not saying they won't issue the citation.
So, so I'm fine with that, but, but we might want to consider what, come down the road a little bit. I, I have one neighbor that said he spent a day in jail, because he kept his equipment parked at his house.
Yes.
And it was, it would have been under the county, and that
It was, yeah. And you actually, there were some other different other violations, he had put up a, a building too close in a setback, and refused to fix it.
Okay.
So, and when you get to the point that you have a violation and they refuse to fix it?